Oh, Sam, Mike? He said, "Oh, Sam."
Yeah, he said, "Oh, Sam."
Okay, call the order of the Select Board meeting of July 31. In-house, we have Stan Mickelson and myself, Sean McDonald via Zoom. Chairman David Tattelbaum.
That's it.
Right now, that's all we have. Ms. Brooks is unavailable, and Mr. Gracie has yet to come on remote. We're going into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21. We're going to be going in to room 309. We will be discussing the reputation and character of an individual, and also the town administrator contract renewal process, and the approved executive session minutes are July 10. Roll call, need a motion to go into executive session made by Mr. Mickelson. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Mr. Tattelbaum, second to that motion. On the motion, roll call vote. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. We're going into executive. We will, we will return, I always have a problem with that, to regular session around 6:30. Thank you.
I'm going to call the meeting of the Select Board of July twenty third, twenty third, two thousand and twenty-three.
July thirty first.
July thirty first, yes, two thousand and twenty-three. We have, the meeting will be recorded. We have two members who are with us remotely. Selectman Gracie and Selectman Tattlebaum. Chairman Tattlebaum, being remote, has delegated the meeting to run to me. I will take care of that. You please rise as we salute the flag and please remain standing thereafter. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing and I'd like to offer a moment of silence for our service people, both past and present, both here and abroad. Please be seated. Do we have a warrant?
There's not enough members to sign the warrant.
Okay, that's true. Okay, all right. But the town will still run, so it's just some of our bills won't be paid.
It's like the government.
Save money, yeah, really. All right, our first appointment is six thirty, and I apologize to everybody. Our executive session ran long. Six thirty, we have a change of officers at Shaw's supermarket. Shaw's supermarket is here, represented by?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott Quilty and Miller, here on behalf of the licensee. This is an administrative housekeeping item. Change of officers and directors, application to the licensee. We had a similar one last year as well for some corporate changes. They are removing Juliet Pryor as Executive Vice President and Corporate Secretary. In her place, adding a Mr. Bradley Beckstrom as a new Group Vice President and Corporate Secretary. So we filed this amendment with the town to effectuate those changes. We're looking to update your records to be basically on, you know, file with current with the Secretary of State. The rest of the names on the liquor license will remain unchanged. There are no operational changes. There are no changes to the store itself, changes to the layout, no changes to the hours, anything that would make any difference to somebody who walked into the store. So this is strictly an administrative update and change, but I'm, of course, happy to answer any questions that you might have about the application.
Same manager, right?
Yes, sir.
Any board members have any questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the change of offices for Shaw's supermarket.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second. I thought I first did it, but I'll second it.
Okay, didn't hear you, Frank, I'm sorry. My mistake. All right, so we have a motion to approve made by Selectman Mickelson and seconded by Selectman Gracie. On the motion, roll call vote, Selectman Mickelson.
Yes.
Selectman Gracie.
Yes.
Chairman Tattlebaum.
Yes.
And the Chair, Vice Chair votes in favor. Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay, same thing, different, different business. Ninety-nine Restaurant, change of officer.
Yes, good evening. My name is Tyler Hensler from Upton, Canal and Devlin. Here representing Ninety-nine Restaurants of Boston, located at one sixty-one Fauntz Corner Road for the change of LLC managers, again, an executive level change in the LLC. Wendy Harkness, Charles Noys and Kurt Schnabelt are being removed as LLC managers and Clint Lotenschlager, Marjorie Nezmera, Philip Purcell, Mark Spurgeon and Kara Jacobs are being added as LLC managers. Nothing should change from the perspective of the people of Dartmouth, and again, an executive level change. Nothing day-to-day, nothing operational will change. At the restaurant, this was submitted via an inverted process with the ABCC. So they have seen this, they have approved this, and I believe we provided the town with a letter stating their approval. But if you guys don't have that, I'm happy to supplement with a copy. But with that, take any questions? Thank you for your time.
Okay, so they couldn't give you any new offices with easier names to pronounce, huh?
I was thinking the same thing when I was, when I was doing this application.
And I see Charlie Noys is being removed. He's related to the original owner, correct?
I honestly don't know. That's the person I'm hearing.
I think they are.
Honestly, I've done, I mean, there's sixty restaurants in Boston. I've probably, I've probably done thirty of these, and that's the first I've heard of it.
Yeah, motion to approve the change of offices for Ninety-nine Restaurant.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Gracie. On the motion, any questions? Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Gracie.
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Constable reappointment, Ian Daley. Mr. Daley, come on up.
Mr. Daley. How are you doing?
I'm doing good, thank you.
How's the constable business lately?
It's pretty busy.
So this is a, this is a reappointment. How long have you been providing service in the town?
About ten years.
Ten years, terrific.
You look familiar.
Yep, very much so.
Motion to approve the reappointment of Constable for the town of Dartmouth.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Gracie. On the motion, any questions? Being none. Roll call vote, Mr. Tattlebaum.
Yes.
Mr. Gracie.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
And the Chair votes in favor. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much for helping us out.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Yourself up.
I'd like to change the order of the votes. That way, it keeps everybody busy when they make the minutes instead of having it consistent.
They might not pick it up.
I don't know, we'll see.
All righty.
There's a reason why we do everything.
Change of stock.
All right, so we have a change of manager, a change of stock, Route Six Beer and Wine. I don't see anything here.
I don't either. You fill us in on that, John? No, not that. We don't have any paperwork.
There's no paperwork in it. Oh, it goes from Ian Daley to?
Sorry, they, they had it continued.
All right, it's continued. All right, so it is continued. So we don't have to deal with that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that concludes our appointments, and our first item on the new business is a request from our Chief of Police for a Deputy Chief Promotion. Chief Lebec, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening again. As I had indicated in my letter, Deputy Chief Story has been out of work since February twenty-eighth. He's not able to return to duty. He's indicated he intends to retire. Having the three command level positions, being the chief and the two deputy chiefs, is extremely important to our department to ensure proper management as well as staffing and workload distribution, continuity of operations. I'm requesting permission to begin the process to select a candidate to fill the impending vacancy. Once a candidate has been selected, I would come before the board with a recommendation. This promotion would then trigger a promotion of a lieutenant as well as a sergeant. To fund those in the interim, I would suggest utilizing an officer's vacancy to temporarily fund those promotions.
It was pretty much spelled out in your letter, and I appreciate the clarity. Members have any questions on this? Mr. Gracie, Mr. Tattlebaum?
No, I'll, I'll big the motion.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Gracie. Is there a second to that motion?
Yeah, but the, the motion is what, to?
It's to?
Chief Promotion Request.
Yeah, the Deputy Chief.
Right, no, I understand that. By, but with a letter from you, with the, the potential Deputy Chief candidate?
He needs to begin the process, and that's just for the process.
No, I know that, and that'll be next.
I'm just seeking to be able to begin the process, because if you weren't going to support what I'm opposing, there'd be no sense in having a process.
I'll second. I just want to, want to hear that next step's coming.
It is. All right, motion made by Mr. Gracie, seconded by Mr. Mickelson to allow the chief to proceed to begin the process for replacement of Deputy Chief Story. On the motion, roll call vote, Mr. Gracie.
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum? Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes, I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Tattlebaum. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
You're not muted?
Yes.
Okay, and Chair votes in favor. You got our, you got our okay?
Thanks.
Begin. Choose wise, as the old man in the cave said.
I already saw the list. I didn't see it, but I.
Chooses wisely.
It's my intent, thank you.
All right.
Thanks for your help. Be safe.
On the new business, V, Patho Therapeutics, HCA Progress Update.
Here they are.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Doing well. Yourself?
Fabulous.
Excellent. Currently, both the licenses at seven four seven and seven five seven State Road are accepted provisional licenses with the Cannabis Control Commission, after which they are pending inspections overall, after completion of construction of both locations. Overall, as is known to the board, the construction for the cultivation facility has been complete. The construction permit for the dispensary is still pending the mass DOT permit acceptance for the site plan review that currently is going to be updated on August fourteenth. We are in the PS and E phase, and after which we will be going to permit draft for mass DOT. And following that, getting the permit, we will be getting the construction permit and moving forward that project as well. Does the board have any questions?
So that's the Grove Facility, is that what we're talking about?
No, the mat, well, the mass DOT is for the retail license.
Okay, on Route Six.
Correct, yes.
Okay. So what do you think that process timeframe?
After the response on August fourteenth, we are looking at probably about two weeks for the permit draft to come back, and then hopefully with all flaws being equal, since we've been working on this for a little bit, the permit being accepted will then go back to the town for permit acceptance and.
So potentially by fall, you could be working on it.
Correct.
Great.
Our remote members have any questions? Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the, the delay has been caused by trying to get all these different confirmations, or has it been something beyond just that?
Essentially, the delay for both projects is pending the opening of the dispensary overall, which we are waiting on the site plans to get the construction permit to then start. That essentially is.
When do you?
Site plan, go ahead.
Site plans from whom? Go ahead, Davids.
The site, the site plans to be approved, could you clarify that, please?
Yes, the project is pending the site plans to be approved. The site plans are being reviewed by mass DOT in the PE, PS and E phase, after which that is accepted, we will move forward with the mass DOT permit to accept the site plan and then go to the town to then get a construction permit with mass DOT's approval of that site plan.
So there's no, there hasn't been any extended issues? This is generally the timeframe. This is how it works.
Yeah, so we're just waiting on the mass DOT to approve it.
Right, right, and they, whatever time they take, they take.
Correct.
Summertime.
Exactly, because essentially the construction permit overall is awaiting the mass DOT's approval.
Yeah, yeah.
We want to make sure we have both construction okays to move forward.
What is the anticipated opening dates of each facility?
Of course. So for the dispensary, if all goes well, I mean, construction in about two months, so I would say worst case, we would be open by Q one after obviously impending CCC inspections overall. Because after the provisional inspection that I mentioned, since we do the provisional license, they inspect afterwards. There's a final license inspection. It does take about thirty to sixty days, so we're looking at the end of Q one of next year.
You say June one?
No.
Q one.
Quarter.
Quarter one.
Quarter, okay.
And once that is complete, we would then begin construction on the cultivation and open that year as well.
Roughly the same, somewhat the same timeframe?
Construction of the cultivation is right now scheduled for about six months, so towards, I would say, Q three, Q four of two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, you have to kind of talk them dates with me, you know.
Yeah, of course.
Q is just, just, you know, I just think if it's, somebody's trying to sell me a car, so.
Cultivation probably spring twenty-four.
So we're looking somewhere between January and March of two thousand and twenty-four for the dispensary and then for the cultivation sometime anywhere from July to December of next year.
Essentially, we want to ensure that we have an avenue for distribution for that facility before completing, and that's talking about the cultivation specifically.
Correct, okay. Has the site plan gone before the planning board yet? In other words, as part as a duality with the state, or are you just waiting for the state before you present it to the town?
The planning board, they requested that, they were comfortable of the mass DOT accepting the plan first and then reviewing that to then issue the construction permit before proceeding with that facility.
Okay, all right. You know, I still have my concerns about the dispensary location and where it's located, not so much with. Say this very, how can I say this very nicely?
Don't say it.
Yeah, really. It's just I have, I have security concerns. And I think you, when you were here the last time, we discussed those security concerns and your, the surroundings that you're in and where those surroundings sometimes are intrepid police force has been requested several times during the course of the year.
And that fence is still in play that we discussed?
Yes.
Yep, that higher.
That is with the completion of the project, that is correct.
Thank you. Mr. Tattlebaum?
The marketplace has changed dramatically since you presented to us, which was, what, a year or two ago? You care to comment on the status of marketplace and your view and what it's going to mean to your operation?
Yeah, absolutely. So in terms of the marketplace, yes, from last year to this year, the marketplace has changed in terms of overall dollar value of, I say, a single pound of a unit has, has dropped. But in terms of a business thriving, we've actually pivoted to having contracts and partnerships with individuals to be able to distribute the amount of product for this facility overall, on top of allocating certain percentage of the facility still to be allocated to the dispensary, hence why we're delaying that cultivation until the dispensary opens, so that way we can hit that target.
So good for the consumer, but you've changed and you've adapted your business plan.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything further? Gentlemen, anything further? All right, well, we appreciate the update and wish we had more of it, more updates. Sometimes people ask what's going on. I don't know.
All good things take time.
Yeah, so good luck, gentlemen, and we appreciate it. We appreciate the update, that's for sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone else. Thank you.
All right, next item, we have a discussion of four eighty-one Fauntz Corner Road, a sixty-four unit sewer connection. This one is going to be interesting.
I believe I heard, my name's Rob Almy, I'm the Chair of the Board of Public Works. I believe I heard Mr. Mickelson say, "All good things take time." Remember that. I want to give a presentation in three parts. I'm going to focus on the wastewater treatment plant because that seems to be an issue with the proposed project. Before I get into this, I would like to point out that there are two high-density residential projects that have, that have been approved, one of which is under construction, that's two. And there are six others proposed, including the one that's listed on the agenda. Tonight, I want to talk about the history and capacity of the wastewater treatment system. I want to talk about the current status, and I want to talk about future actions and where we are. First, the plant, the existing plant, was designed and built in nineteen ninety-one. It was built pursuant to what's called a sewer master plan. The master plan, the sewer master plan was updated in two thousand and nine, and there were several plant upgrades done in two thousand and eleven. The upgrades included increased aeration to treat BOD, which is biological oxygen demand. There has been some infiltration control on the collection system that saved about a mil- The upgrades included increased aeration to treat BOD, which is biological oxygen demand. There has been some infiltration control on the collection system that saved about a million gallons per day worth of treatment demand, and the upgrade installed UV lights to control bacteria. The current capacity of the plant is about four million gallons per day. This information that I just gave you was supposed to be given by Mike Arnold, who's the supervisor of the plant. Unfortunately, he was unable to join us tonight, because he's been hospitalized, it's serious, but we anticipate that he will recover. We'll keep you apprised. The second part, so this is the background. In summary, we have an old plant with old equipment, and as I'll explain next, we are at capacity. Currently, there are somewhere between two hundred and four hundred residences in this town that are on septic system but have been paying betterment for connection to the sewer system. In essence, that puts them first in line, for example, if the state does implement its Title V revisions, right? This is, so this is very important to keep in mind. So we got somewhere between two hundred and four hundred homes that could be, and arguably should be connected. We are now having problems with the plant. The problems are not serious enough to draw the attention of regulators. However, we are exceeding daily inflow on a regular enough basis that we are relying on longer-term averages to make our standards. When we have an exceedance on inflow, the following days, we violate things like BOD, biological oxygen to pan, demand, and bacteria levels. Again, those are short-term exceedances, and we stay under the radar with longer-term averages, all right? So the, the point here is that we are at the limits. So now I'd like to give you a few quotes from the recent master plan. These are action items. The first is, develop a new comprehensive wastewater management plan. I'd like to pass out now a document that was reviewed and approved by the Board of Public Works at its last meeting. This is an outline, and I'll give you guys enough copies so that you can, available to the other board members.
Thank you.
Thank you. And one for the third estate. Can't leave the third estate out. We'll be contacting you in the future about a public relations program just for this. We expect your help. All right, so, we read the master plan. This is a, what will probably be a multi-year process. We've already begun the evaluation of existing conditions. We have, I expected our next board meeting that we will see consultant proposals for some of the technical work. We've already engaged SERPED in talking about population and zoning projections. Now, the reason that we, the Public Works Department, are involved in population projections and zoning is because, as I've told this board before, and as I've told the planning board, it wasn't done in the master plan. When it wasn't done in the master plan, it put us, the Public Works Department, behind the eight ball, all right? Now, a couple of other quotes, just to kind of set up the rest of the things I want to say. Under land use, there are four action items under goal one. Rezone or establish overlay zones that permit higher-density housing along the Route six corridor, that's one. Second one, rezone or establish overlay zones that permit medium-density housing in village-type settings outside the Route six corridor. Fourth, third one, where possible, couple of these zoning changes with state programs like forty R that can help recover some of the costs to the town for additional development. And the fourth one, develop a zoning bylaw for sixty-two and older senior housing. Okay? Those basically say, look at your zoning and figure out where you want more density. That's what that is saying to us. That is what the town has said in its master plan. The next item comes in under housing, under action items, goal three. Consider redevelopment sites of key vacant developed parcels, particularly those in previously identified priority development areas. And the next one is, study the possibility of infill development of undeveloped lots in neighborhoods initially zoned for higher-density development to help alleviate the housing needs for senior residents. All right, I think the key words here are study, rezone. In other words, if it's worth doing, take your time and do it right. Now, the Public Works Department, I'm going to go back to what I told you earlier, is facing six proposed high-density mult- multi-residential developments. What this does is it puts higher BOD than normal residences into the system. It also puts other stuff into the system that we have to deal with, and I'll give you an example, and I don't mean to go off base here, but I will say that flushables are not flushable, because they contain microfibers, and the microfibers jam the pumps that move the sewage to the plant. And people, human beings, need to get in there and actually by hand pick this stuff out. We need public education on this. That's you. Okay?
She's got it.
You're listening. All right, the third thing is concentrated fat soil and grease. These are what the British call candles, and they plug pumping stations and they plug the main lines. With dense residential development, we have a much higher incidence of those kinds of problems. We don't have them with restaurants, why? Because zoning and the regulations say thou shalt control oil, grease, and fats, which works. One of the suggestions you might get from the Public Works Board in some kind of a process here is that those kinds of requirements should be applied for certain large developments. In other words, put it on to the developer to help us avoid some of the problems that we would have to otherwise deal with, all right?
Excuse me, on that, on that tone there, are there other cities and towns in the state that, that have that requirement?
They all have the problem. I can't answer your question, but as I was taught many years ago, I'll find out.
Thank you, I'd really like to know that.
Yeah, and, but I'll, I will also observe, it's okay to be first.
Yeah, I'm not saying, I'd just be curious to see-
Well, it, it just occurred to us in conversation, so, but that's a fair question, let's find out, because it would be a model.
Yes.
What worked, what doesn't work.
Yeah, yeah, great, thank you, sorry to bother you, but-
No, 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 this is, this is probably the most important thing I'm going to do today, right? Except say goodnight to my wife. All right, so, the problem with the six projects that I mentioned earlier, including the one that's on the agenda, is that they're not included in the current zoning, and they will get in the way of those residences that presumably stand in line, particularly if they're, if there are Title V problems. I gave you a document, we understand we need to be on this. We are going to be hiring consultants, we'll work with SERPED, we're going to work through this. I wish we were a couple of years ahead, we're not, here we are, all right? However, new demand on the system, significant new demand, could drive violations. They're expensive. The problem with those violations is that they have to, the, the cost has to be shared with everybody, not the projects that are giving you the new increment, right? That are actually causing the violations. I don't think we want to get into a situation where we talk to residents who have paid the betterment, why they can't hook up. I don't want to go there, ever, right? That, that would really bother me. The, the third thing that, as a, someone who's been around bureaucracies, I'm very concerned that if we do have long-term problems at the plant, that EPA and/or the state could decide to help us, and I would really prefer not to have their help. I appreciate their funding, right? I know the role, the very important role that they play, but I think local interests are better at dealing with getting on top of the situation and doing the right thing for their residents. So in conclusion, I'm glad to give this presentation to you guys. I know it's bad news, it really isn't good news.
I think we knew it was coming.
Yeah, but I urge you to help the planning board understand the issue. We stand ready to give the same presentation to the planning board. I urge you to help the appeals board that has the power to override existing zoning, help them understand, because the implications of too many of these dense projects too soon means we won't be able to handle it, either because we have violations, or, and I don't want to say no to development. It's not what we're here for, we're here to provide services at a reasonable cost to the public, that's what we're here for, okay? But we're getting to a place where we're, we're at that limit, okay? Any questions?
Would we, and I know you just said you wouldn't want to, but would you, would we ever have to consider a moratorium?
The M word.
Yeah, well-
Did you notice how hard I tried not to use the M word?
I mean, it's something, considering the, the, the end result and what we're up against.
There, there's a set of circumstances where that would be appropriate. I'd like to get, avoid those circumstances.
I would too.
I will point out that Wareham has recently been unable to avoid those circumstances.
I hope we're not there.
Yeah.
But, but it's something in the back of my mind, and it's something I dreadfully would not want to be part of, but at some point, we might not have an issue, any other choice.
That's correct, but again-
Considering all bases on, on the sewer treatment plant that we have now.
Your board appointed the members of the Public Works Board to do a job. We just gave you an outline of what we think we need to do. Now, you guys, watch us, make sure we stay on top of this. And then you can help us with some of the other boards, and maybe we have a conversation about all this.
I think we could have a meeting with the three boards. I think that would be wise for all of us to sit down and discuss it at one time rather than going separately.
Absolutely.
Have a workshop and have everybody in the building.
This is a, a good place to start.
Yes, sir.
Right.
So, Mr. Chairman, just as I'll let you know, that, that's, I think we're calling for a workshop with the DPW, the planning board, the ZBA, and this board, to discuss what's going on, especially we're considering the impact that it's going to have on the sewer treatment plant. It's also, as part of that discussion, number one, the four eighty-one Farnes Connor Road came before the ZBA, I believe, on June twenty-first. Have they reached a decision on that yet? Do you know it, Mr. McGuinness?
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Has, are you aware of any decision made by the ZBA on four eighty-one Farnes Connor Road? Because they, it was supposed to be on June twenty-first.
Uh, no, they've continued it, they have not made a decision.
They've continued it, okay. All right, I'm wondering if also, if this is something that the town needs to look at, and Mr. Carrero, I think you can be involved in this too, is number one, is, is these large expansions of development such as four eighty-one, such as some of the other ones, if they can stop bearing some of the costs of the improvement of the sewer treatment plant. I mean, you know, you want to come in, you want to make money by putting up housing and you want to, but you know, you're also putting a burden on, you know, the taxpayers when it comes time for the infrastructure. I'm wondering if that's something that we should look at also. I mean, I know, I know somebody coming in with, and I don't want to use four eighty-one, but I'm going to, you know, sixty-four units. Those sixty-four units, the connection fee for that, basically, is, it's going to be higher than a residential unit. I don't know if it's structured on the number of units, maybe it should be. That's something that I think the DPW has to look at too. But also, these developers are going to have to take some kind of a interest in making sure that the future viability of what they are proposing can work with the current infrastructure and future infrastructure of the town. I know during the discussions of the Title V with DEP, I know we talked about auxiliary treatment plants somewhere down the line. Maybe that's still in play, I don't know at this time.
If you look at the document that I handed you, I think that under the third heading are, is an alternatives analysis. And we anticipate doing the classic alternatives analysis where you pick, you throw everything out on the table without regard to how feasible or infeasible it is. And then you, then, once you've thought of all the potential alternatives, like satellite treatment systems, whatever you want to call them, then you start going through any, giving them attributes and trying to figure out which ones are reasonable, and you want to continue working on it, which ones you just say, okay, that, you know, on, on inspection, that one doesn't work. Yes, those, that's the kind of thing we'd be looking at. But we need to know better where the population, where the industrial demand is going to be, and how that either does or does not square with what we have in the ground for transportation, and then at the other end, treatment.
I, I know I'm, I'm not a big fan of the process of the M word, okay? I don't necessarily agree with that, but looking at the costs of upgrading, you know, there's only, there's only so much land in this town that can be developed.
Right.
At some point in time, and I'm not sure where it is now, and what, what, what the update is, somebody said there's a potential of four thousand more homes being built in this town in the land that's left. How true that is right now, this was something I heard roughly five, six, maybe even ten years ago. How true that is now? It's still concerning, because it's a possibility that a majority of those are within the sewer system. And we're definitely going to need something to do with the plant, there's no offense or buts about it, so. I can tell you, whatever we, whatever we need to do as a select board to make sure that the DPW gets the best information to themselves and to our citizens, we need to do it. Period, no offense or buts about it. Mr. Tattlebaum?
Thank you, Mr. Jeff. I think that I want to flat out say, I've spent a bit of time with Mr. Almy, and he's probably the, the most humble and smartest guy as one that I know. And what he just gave us was a simple, understandable explanation of what's, what's ahead of us. And he gave us the way to get things done, which I've always, I've always known is, that's really what our select, that's what our job is, to get people together in the same room. Having that, having that workshop with as many people as we can, planning long-term, looking at these priorities. We have to trust the process and stay with it, and it's, we have a, it's a new regime, it's DPW, we understand the issues, things are really happening there. And I just want to thank Rob publicly for the time he's put in, presentation he made, and really gives us some real clarity. Not disaster, because we can make this work, but it just requires a plan and a process, and I think he's done a, he and his group and his board has done a fantastic job for us, and I thank you for it.
We'll send you the bill.
Yeah. We'll do the same.
Yeah, we'll do the same, exactly. All right, so, basically, we have kind of like a little bit of a gray damper just put on the meeting, because it's like all of a sudden, hey, you know, we know what's going to hit the fan.
Yeah, as it were.
Plain and simple.
Right, exactly.
So, basically, we need to get our act together and get it going as soon as possible.
We'll have that workshop.
So, let's get this, let's get this workshop planned ASAP.
Yep, and I don't know if you have all received an invitation, but we do tours. And for me, even though I've seen these kinds of facilities- And, um, for me, even though I've seen these kinds of facilities, it was an eye-opener. Um, Mr. Arnold and his staff are wizards at keeping this thing running. And you're going to see some stuff tonight that's, you know, part and parcel of making standards.
Can it happen?
Well, I can tell you this, every time I flush, I know where it's going and I know how, how it's being handled.
I've been out there before and Dave Hickock's taken me a few times.
Yeah.
And it's, 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 what an eye-opener.
Yeah.
Really, uh.
Unfortunately, like the rest of us, it's not getting any younger.
You know, all those cornfields that are near there, they must, that corn must be great.
We don't, we don't do anything out there except if we.
There's nothing by osmosis.
Yeah, that is town property. And if, heaven forbid, we needed a new facility, we got the right location.
Yeah, we're next door.
You know, but I would, I'd much rather that we were able to use what we have as a site and keep that in corn, because I love corn. And we're almost there, guys.
All right, well, thank you. You did a great job, Ms. Almy. I personally can't thank you enough.
Well, thank me when we're done.
Yep. Thanks to be withheld.
And I'm here to answer any questions on the next item.
Great, thanks, thank you, sir.
So next on the agenda, we have the, uh, 2024, um, ARPA funding items discussion.
All right, well, this will be a little bit of a silver lining, followed by Rob's presentation.
Money-wise, right?
Yes, so, uh, this is, um, just an overview, this, uh, this meeting of what we're looking at and what Gary and I are proposing along with Tim Barber. We've met to, uh, you know, what the second round of our ARPA funding, what we're going to present. Uh, we still plan a meeting with the finance committee to present this, but I just wanted to give the board a few bites of the apple to review what, uh, we have. But, uh, just by way of reference, the American Rescue Plan Act, uh, the eligible use, eligible uses, uh, primarily investment in water, sewer and broadband infrastructure. I think you've seen just, uh, since the last round, we've pursued that. Uh, revenue replacement for the provisions of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue due to COVID-19. And we'll go into all of that, but we did receive money, so we've used revenue replacement funds to do some things like the website, um, and some other projects. Uh, COVID-19 expenditures or negative economic impacts of COVID-19, including assistance to small businesses, households and hard-hit industries and economic recovery. We've pursued that. Uh, premium pay for essential workers is the fourth. These are the three, uh, according to the, the government, what, uh, the four uses. Also by way of reference, uh, the total estimated ARPA award to the town, uh, we estimate about 10.2 million. Uh, we've received directly from the federal government, 3.58 million. This would be considered the revenue replacement funding. Uh, we're eligible for the rest for county reimbursement of 5.76 million. Uh, we're estimating, we still don't know what Bristol County, we're estimating they're going to hold back some of the funding because they can. Uh, we've estimated about 10%, about $877,000. So our total funds to be committed by the end of, uh, F, of calendar year 2024 would be 9.34 million.
Uh, can you just quickly explain why the county can hold back?
We're estimating that, they haven't, they haven't been clear.
They have the authority to do it, right?
They could hold back any amount, we're estimating 10, so they could say more or less.
But, but.
This is just the way the federal government.
I know, it's the way the federal government's set up, so, but the county really doesn't have to hold it back either. They could give all the funds directly to the towns and cities.
We need to get their ear.
And some other counties are holding back the majority of the funds, so it's, they, they haven't been clear unless Gary knows otherwise, but we've asked them, you know, multiple times and they have not been clear about what, what they're planning on doing. If anything, they may not do anything. Uh, this is last year, uh, the projects we funded, um, emergency generators, uh, and Mosher Jr., uh, and some pump stations, uh, bile filter blowers and variable, variable frequency drives, uh, rebuild the filter presses, um, switchgear maintenance. This is all DPW, inflow, uh, infiltration remediation, skate improvements. Then we also, the board also funded HVAC upgrades for the schools, uh, tennis court reconstruction at the high school, uh, as well as tennis and pickleball courts at the Dartmouth Regional Park on the north side, the recreation center, design and engineering, uh, the, uh, purchase of the property at 245 Russell's Mills Road, which is directly behind, uh, DCTV to tie in that whole parcel with the police station, which is, uh, nice. Uh, the website upgrade, which came out great, those of you have, uh, seen it, a real, uh, improvement. Uh, and pickleball courts on Russell's Mills Road, uh, down the street here, uh, at the end of Solcom. So if you've driven by, you've seen they've started the construction, they're moving along.
Mm-hmm.
So last year, uh, the way it broke down was, um, uh, between the schools and DPW and parks and recreation, we had this breakdown, but we also had about 56% of the funding, 5.177 million, that went un, unallocated, uh, planned to be distributed this year, uh, FY24. So a small breakdown, uh, total funding availability, 9.34 million. FY23, uh, the board, uh, elected to fund 4.163 million, leaving a balance of 5.177 million. So what are we proposing so far for FY24? Well, really, it's dedicated to water and sewer infrastructure. Uh, treatment plant and system upgrades for disinfection byproducts, that's a big number, it's 3.5 million. The sec, the sec, uh, the second item is, um, capital project overages contingency. So in the past, we funded, uh, projects through capital for, say, Allen Street Garage to redo the doors and also the police station demolition. You know, we, we estimate what we're, the bid is going to be, they're all coming back higher than estimated. So, uh, we wanted to have a contingency number in here for use of the funds to cover the costs of those projects, so we don't have to go back to town meeting. And I think, we think it's a good use of the, uh, revenue reimbursement funds, uh, provided. Uh, but then back to DPW, comprehensive sledge handling and composting evaluation, that's 175,000. Uh, ultraviolet bulbs and starters, uh, 582, emergency generators at four stations, 300,000 and inflow and, uh, infiltration remediation of 250,000. And that comes out to the balance of the 5.177, uh, million. And like I said, we still, uh, will present this to the finance committee, uh, in August to get their feedback on it before bringing it back to the, the board. Uh, you know, one thing that's really nice that we can do with the, uh, ARPA expenditures for DPW is, as they are enterprise funds, generally, any capital improvements they have have to go onto the water rates. By using the ARPA funds, this does not go on the, uh, water and sewer rates, which is some benefit, uh, to the residents in town that are, are on water and sewer. Uh, so overall allocation of the funds, just to show you where they're allocated, 93% of the funds we're proposing to be allocated towards, uh, DPW water and sewer enterprise, uh, water and sewer enterprise funds.
Great.
Uh, 7% is going to town government. So you can see, the board takes this seriously, Mr. Almy here, uh, the, the chair, uh, have, have been pretty, uh, vocal about the need for water and sewer infrastructure in town and improvements to that. So this, we're trying to dedicate as much money as possible for that goal. Uh, the breakdown between the years, uh, last year, 45%, this year, the, the remainder is the 55% uh, for a total of 9.341 million. Uh, but we also think about some larger future capital expenditures that are down the road, not really related to ARPA so much, but, uh, that the town needs to consider. Uh, as you know, the select board established a long-term capital planning committee. Uh, the first meeting is coming up, I think, next week, uh, to discuss long-term capital expenditures, uh, both with DPW and also some larger projects in town. And that's it. So that's just the first pass, look at it. Uh, but we are dedicating a lot of, uh, the funding towards water and sewer, which is, uh, and.
Right, so.
Okay, all right. Stomi, you have any comments on that or just, uh?
No, I, I, I appreciate the, uh, the focus on water and sewer. The, the water funding was part or is pursuant to a plan that we actually did put together that identified five years of upgrades. So to the extent we can get ahead of it a little bit, we do try and do that. And, uh, you know, be, be very deliberate about what our capital needs are.
We gave last year a million, 1,000,000.47,000.
Yes, right.
Right. Towards water and sewer also.
Absolutely, and you know, that's, that's huge.
I know that's a, pardon the pun, a drop in the bucket, but.
But, well, listen, what you're doing is you're taking the taxpayer dollars that went to the federal government and you're bringing them back home, which is, you know, the right way to do it. Anyway, thank you, thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
The best thing about it is the, it won't, it won't increase the rate, you know?
For a while, correct.
Right. At least the improvements slated won't increase the rates.
Yeah, and that, and that's a lot of money.
Right. It's a huge amount of money. Mr. Tattlebaum, you have any questions? Mr. Gracie, any questions?
Um, that meeting, uh, the long-term, uh, committee meets will be for the second time on the 9th, which is next week. And, uh, it'd be nice, melding together of these ARPA funds plus how it fits into the long-range plan, so, uh, we have a really good group meeting there and it, it's all working the same direction. Paddle all upstream.
Mr. Gracie, anything?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, thank you, thank you, Sean.
Thank you, sir.
Good knowledge and hopefully the finance committee will.
Stomi, you have a nice evening and kiss your wife.
Tell her, we say hello.
I'll tell her you called.
Okay, um, next is we have the energy aggregation contract update.
Uh, yes, so the last meeting, our energy manager, Kathy Stanley, was in here to talk about the renewal of the energy aggregation contract. Uh, there was some discrepancy in, not the rate, but, uh, how it's applied, so I just wanted to provide clarification. Uh, Good Energy had sent us some slides that were not completely accurate. Um, our current plan, uh, is the standard products, 10.47 cents per kilowatt hour. They have the green plan, which is 50% green energy, that's 12.24. And the green, 100% renewable energy is 14.019 cents. At the last meeting, we presented these options, which was the basic optional plan was 15.784 cents per kilowatt hour. And the default, uh, product was, um, 10% additional renewable, which was 16.178. That is not accurate, so the default is the basic. So we were saying the new plan, the default is the 10% renewable energy, that was incorrect. So, uh, everybody that's on the plan currently, on the default, would go on to the optional basic product because that is now the default, so.
Took that one down a bit, too, yeah.
So it would go instead of the 16, where people would have to opt out to go down to the basic.
No, it's 15.
Whoever's on it is going to go on basic and they can choose to go up.
Correct, and then I'll get to that.
So it starts at 15.784, correct?
So, um.
That's less writing I have to do.
Yes, and there's, there's not three plans anymore. So there's the basic, the dark, the standard, which is 15.784 cents per kilowatt hour, kilowatt hour, and the plus, which is 100%, so there's no middle ground.
Okay.
So it's either 15.784 or 17.372.
A lot easier.
Yes, much easier to.
Yes, yes, so.
Easier for the, for the residents.
Correct.
To comprehend, yeah.
Uh, so I just wanted to make sure that the residents know that that's clarified, they don't have to call, they, they just get migrated over. Um, and then there's some information on the rate, I think Kathy showed you this, how the, uh, ever-source rate compares to the aggregation rate. You can see it's been, uh, significant savings for the town, uh, the billing, but this, the big number is, I don't want to go through all that. Uh, since 2016, residents of the town have saved 14 million dollars by being on this.
That's unbelievable, that's great, that's wonderful.
So, uh, you know, everybody has a little bit of that, um, but they're, you know, that's anticipated through April of '23. But, you know, we don't know if we'll see that much in the next contract, but it's been pretty significant. It's been shown to stay, uh, well below the average ever-source rate, so it's a, it's been a very beneficial plan for the town.
Well, anything to keep 14 million dollars out of ever-source's pocket.
Yeah, yeah, I can tell you, all that adri, advertising as I, as we, we thought would happen is out there. It's kind of going out to the residents, offering, uh, unbelievable rates, uh, for individual companies and it's a scam. It truly is a scam. If you want the best rate for your home or your business, this is what you need to do. Get involved with the aggregation and you will save monies, not through these, these postcards that you read in the mail. It's a scam, throw it, throw it away.
It's even gone so far as, um, some of the companies like to camp out at, uh, a local wholesale, um.
Exactly.
Club store and offer you, and when you talk to them about, uh, the rate, um, and you let them know that you're on the, uh, the aggregate and this is their rate, they kind of look at you going, uh, yeah, that's a good rate.
But don't sign it.
But don't sign anything.
Don't sign anything.
Yeah. And as we, as we stated before, um, you know, look at your bill, look at your, look at who your supplier is and if it says the Dartmouth CEA, then you're on the aggregate program. So, and if it doesn't, get in touch with the, uh, the energy manager here, um, to find out how to get on the program. It'll save you some money, trust me. All right, moving on. We have the Indigenous, Indigenous Peoples' History and Culture Committee Composition Discussion.
I can tell me that, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Tattlebaum.
Uh, Mrs. Brooks would have made this presentation tonight, but she's away. And, uh, we spoke at length to make sure that we're on the same page. Uh, there's a lot of misinformation going around and accusing, uh, the town going in directions that are wild and unsavory, but that is, I can assure you, that is not the case. First and foremost, uh, Mr. McGinnis was kind enough, uh, on our, uh, minute, on our agenda, uh, is the, um, requirement, uh, by, it's a Article One Boards, Commissions and Committees. Regarding being membership on a committee, it reads, "No person other than a resident of the town at Dartmouth shall serve as a voting member on any town, board, commission or committee. Town employees who are non-residents may serve as ex officios." Having been faced with that law, that's what we knew we had and we, uh, one of the requirements we tried to do was find, um, find tribal members, um, historians, anyone we could find who are also residents, so they could be voting, full voting members in the committee. Uh, we've been out looking and talking to the tribes and frankly, we haven't gotten a lot of interest. Um, and we would love to have members of the tribe who are residents of the town who can vote uh, on that committee. And we invite anyone and anybody who wants to join us on this committee, uh, to do so. Um, we've never excluded them and wanted it from the very beginning. We've been in contact with the tribes, the Kuna tribe and with the, um, the asset. And, um, there's a lot of turf protection going on between the two. Um, and we've even encountered issues where, uh, the people who wanted to keep the logo in town, uh, their work is done and they moved on. Where as a town, we're trying to honor our history and do it in a way that is, uh, dignified and meaningful. Uh, we're in the process of talking with school committee members to see if we coordinate the effort. Uh, but my main point here, Ms. Brooks, is that we are open to any member of any tribe in town who is interested in joining us, uh, who could vote, or maybe it'd just be a member of a non-resident who could be on the committee. Uh, but, um, the, uh, I think the clarification, uh, was necessary, uh, and that's where we stand on that. Any questions?
Mr. Gracie, you have any questions?
No.
Mr. Mickelson?
No.
I have none. David, I know that you're working hard on this and, uh, I, I have no, no problem to seeing that you're going to be able to see this through and make this committee a valuable committee in town, that's for sure.
Thank you, that's our intention. We have great people involved, great, great people, from the schools, from town and, uh, historians, and we're going to keep going at it, so. And we invite anybody and anyone to contact us, thank you.
Good job, really, you and Heidi.
Oh, Heidi's been great, great. I remember her assistant.
Okay.
Thank you, David.
Good job, Heidi.
That too.
I wouldn't go that far, no, that's all.
Okay, next item on the agenda, we have, uh, single-serving liquor bottle ban discussion. Okay, who proposed that one?
I did.
Mr. Mickelson?
So, so it's interesting how this is turning out, what happened in New Bedford. I'm sure everyone has, has seen the turmoil that they've, that's caused. Um, however, I think every resident in this town, every day, if they're out in a boat and they, and they're in a walkway somewhere, they're seeing these, these nip bottles in the gutters, on the sidewalk, on the, on the grounds, their greens, their, their, their lawns, they're everywhere, everywhere. So, um, it's, it's difficult to, to control because now I see that, um, the manufacturers now are, are not, are manufacturing a different-sized bottle. So it's not a single shot and throw it out, it's a shot and a half or two shots, so the content of that little bottle is larger. So the city of New Bedford has a, a, uh, I guess a new bylaw, uh, that, uh, will not be too effective because the manufacturer is going to change the sizes of the bottle. So I always thought that it'd be a good idea, how are you going to stop it? Probably not. Um, you don't want people buying larger bottles, putting it in a bag like they used to and drinking in their bag and then get pulled over for an opened, uh, open container. That's why these little nips became so popular, because they took a shot and they threw it out, so they could never be arrested for an open bottle. So, um, I'm thinking more of, and I guess it has to be a state, so maybe we got to get our state people, to have a deposit. state people, to have a deposit, an X amount, 25 cents, whatever the number is, I don't care, a deposit for those bottles. So people would be picking up like they always picked up deposits, like soda cans and et cetera, et cetera. That's what I'm thinking would be the best, because you're not going to stop this. So take advantage of the other way. 25 cents, whatever the number is.
What I don't understand, what I don't understand on the bottle bill is why beer bottles have the 5 cents on them, but liquor bottles never did.
We should do that. I don't know if we can...
I mean, this has to be a state. This has to be a state right there.
But we need to get our legislators involved in this, and we should take advantage of it.
I mean...
Chairman, I put this on the agenda, and you see my thinking, not because we're going to solve this tonight and we can make a major decision, but it's, I think with the vote in New Bedford, there was one in Fairhaven recently, I think our residents may have a keen interest in it, and I think we need to try to lead the way in some form to decide what we can do about it. A deposit's going to mean, you know, a state issue, because it can't be done alone, the whole industry. I don't know where we want to go with it, I don't know where our residents feel, and of course, New Bedford, there are three people decided on it. In Fairhaven, they had a vote. So I just threw it out there for a discussion as to what, you know, where do we stand, or we just want to sit on it for a while, but that's why I put it out there.
Well, I think we should get our legislators involved in a deposit side of this issue, rather than trying to solve where those bottles are going to go, because they're going to, if we don't have a deposit, they're going to end up in the street. But if they end up in the street and you have a deposit, people are going to pick them up and turn them in to cash.
I mean, you know, I've always been a firm believer that the bottle bill should be expanded.
Yes.
I mean, there's no clear, I mean, I could never understand why liquor bottles, hard liquor bottles, were never included on this. I mean, malt liquor, wine coolers, they're all involved, they all have the nickel. Why not, you know, a 750 milliliter bottle of Jack Daniels? You know, why doesn't that have a deposit on it? You know, and if you're really thinking about it, why doesn't water bottles? I mean, I think there's more of a problem with empty water bottles than there are nip bottles. You know, you drive anywhere in the street, there's a crushed Poland Springs, or an Aquafina, or Dasani, or whatever the heck, you know, whatever water's out there, you know, crushed bottles, you know, like his, you know, that are just everywhere. You know, why aren't they involved? This has to be addressed at the state level. No offense or buts about it.
The thing about the nips bottles is that this is a social phenomenon, and it's driving drinking to a point where drinking and driving and younger kids, because it's convenient. The retailer me one day, went down to a liquor store, and I counted 10,000 nip bottles in one store. 10,000.
David, one liquor store owner stated that 15% of his take was nips. 15%.
It's a social phenomenon.
That's a lot of money.
Maybe we can take it up at another time, when we see maybe what's going to roll out in the next couple of months.
Yeah, I mean, if it wasn't nips, it'd be the half pints, and the half pints are the pints, you know?
Yeah, all right.
But I think the bottle bill needs to be reassessed in the Commonwealth. No offense or buts about it.
Agreed.
Maybe we can have a, you know, maybe we can even have a private discussion with our representative, you know, to talk about it, or maybe even a public discussion. You know, we'd like to involve the state senator, or maybe a member of his staff can come forward, because, to be honest with you, we haven't seen them in a while, it would be nice to see them. All right, next item on the agenda, we have the Town Hall Customer Survey, Service Survey.
Yes, our Select Board Member Heidi Brooks is working with the, has been working with Chris Vitale, the new Assistant Town Administrator, on a Town Hall Service Feedback Form to find out what people's experience are like when they're dealing with town offices. So Chris and Heidi have worked on this together, we have it posted, people can access it either internally, through a QR code, when they, it'll be posted at most departments or all departments. They can go online through our website and click on a link, and it takes them to our engagement portal, and they can take the survey via the portal. But we also will have paper copies, if people want to fill them out in person, and they can drop them off at any department, and we will combine them with the online survey. Ask what department they go to, how much time they spent, what their experience was like. They have, can add other information and comments. So both positive and negative, we want to hear everything. And so if there's areas for us to improve, we want to hear about it. If there's areas where we excel, we want the staff to know about that as well.
Mr. Mickelson.
So, that being said, it's a great idea, but there are some people and a good deal of our seniors that do not have access to the computer. I suggest that we create a hotline for the seniors or people that don't have computers that they can call with information that they need, and we need to have someone man that hotline each day and get these answers, get the questions and answers to these people via a phone line.
I'm wondering if the council on agent would be something simpler to that, or maybe, you know, with the seniors that they serve, maybe there should be a stack of paper ballots at the senior center.
There will be on the survey, yes.
We need to be able to get ahold of these people that do not have computers. And I don't know the numbers, but I think it's a lot larger than you might think, but they're the people that really need the services more than the other people. So let's honor these people, especially the seniors.
What if, just out of thinking here, what if there was a survey kiosk somewhere located in Town Hall, so that, you know, if somebody wants to do an immediate, you know, they can come right to the kiosk?
Yeah, we can do that. I mean, it's...
At least if they don't have something at home, they come here, because we know people still come here and pay taxes by check or by cash, and generally, a vast majority of those probably don't, aren't technologically savvy.
Savvy, computer savvy, yeah.
So maybe even a kiosk, you know, would work.
And probably somewhere closer to that office, the kiosk.
Yeah, by the door.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just something that they have, that they can...
Because I think that's where the majority of people coming into Town Hall go to, you know, the collector's office.
We can do that.
Okay.
Great.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
I might suggest that we push this survey as much as we can and get as many out and back. It may tell us a lot of the answers about whether it be a kiosk or an 800 hotline, but it's clear that we need to do something, and hopefully the survey will tell us a lot of things as well, but let's get them out there and get them answered back.
If they don't have a computer, they can't go on the survey.
We're going to make manual copies available, bring them down to this COA.
Right, yeah, I mean, there will be paper copies available, so there's just, you know, just putting all the information together, but if we also have a kiosk here where somebody can just, you know, spend, I mean, because looking at the feedback form, it looks like it's basically, you know, less than a five-minute thing.
Yep.
You know, and I mean, even then, you know, once you press down that you want a follow-up on the survey, if you press no, you're done, you know, see you later, so. Okay. All right, so we'll get that, if you take a look into that. All right, Town Administrator update, Mr. McGinnis.
Yes, so last Thursday, we, the town was officially awarded two Seaport Economic Council Grants. We were awarded those in Chatham at a ceremony with Lieutenant Governor. The first is the Uponagansett Park and Dias Landing Master Plan Study. That was $60,000, so we hope to look at a future plan for that area, which is in line with our harbor management plan, and also addresses some issues we have out there to improve it. In unison with that grant, we also received the Roger Street Boat Ramp Design and Permitting Grant for $250,000. The goal is to construct a new boat ramp on the Roger Street area where we have the parking lot for boats and trailers, and also help to migrate some of the boat and trailer parking from Dias Landing over to the Roger Street, so we can perhaps have more green space.
So Roger Street will have a new ramp that, unlike, they can't use the one that they have.
Correct.
So they can tear that up, apparently, and redo it?
No, the new ramp would be on the other side of the parking lot, where the elevation's higher.
Right, right, right. And that'd be the end of that one.
Yes.
Yeah, fill it in.
Yep. And we think it would be more desirable for commercial fishermen or recreational fishermen that want to get out to the water faster.
Yeah, that's great. That's wonderful.
We also received notice that we received, and I have a hard time with this word, our Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program Action Grant, and the amount of $84,375 for FY24, and this is to help us provide nature-based solutions and retrofits of critical infrastructure within the coastal flood-prone areas. This was advocated and a lot of support provided by the Harbor Management Implementation Committee, particularly Patty Swerduck and Andrea Langhauser and Roger Race, along with our consultant to have applied.
Good chunk of change, too.
Yeah, last year we applied and we did not receive it, so we sharpened our pencils and worked on the application harder this year, along with our engineering consultant, Nick Christofori, and we were able to receive the grant.
Wonderful. And how much was that again?
$84,375.
It's not chump change, that's great.
And then lastly, we have a retirement announcement. Dave Brunet, who's been in our building department for 18 years, has announced that he'll be retiring later this month. Anyone that's had any dealings with Dave, he is a very professional, mild-mannered, easy-going gentleman, always looking to help out, always contributing. I think he's been a great employee for the town, but also a great ambassador for the public, particularly in a building department where, you know, everyone isn't always friendly and nice all the time, because rules are rules, but he has a nice manner about him. He'll be greatly missed, so hopefully he comes back in a very small, part-time fill-in role. He's thinking about doing that, but in the meantime, we'll advertise for his position.
Definitely will be missed, that's for sure. All right, thank you for your update. Old Business, anything on the Bliss Corner?
No, no new updates.
Okay, how about Nokochok?
No.
Municipal broadband?
No, we're working on finalizing the contract after the consultant study, we should have that in the next week or so.
And that's DEP Title V?
No, that's Status Quo.
Okay. All right, we have minutes to approve of May 22nd, June 5th, June 12th, and is July 10th in here?
No, it says July 10th is pending completion, right?
All right, I don't know.
Is that it?
Right. All right, so it's no July 10th. So it's just May 22nd, June 5th, and June 12th. Does anybody have any questions on the minutes?
I have one comment on June 5th.
Yep.
It was the CBA Joint Meeting. It was a great recap, and Mr. Attorney Materia's did a great job.
Yep.
But at the end, he did agree that they would try a renewed interest, a renewed emphasis, shall I say, on bringing in boards where there's important issues that should be heard as opposed to, and he agreed that he would, they would consider that. I don't see that in here at all, and I think it's important to put in there. To me, that was the whole purpose of that meeting, and I think I'd like to add that to it, because it was part of the minutes.
Okay. All right, I'm going to pull these minutes, David, if you can make your adjustment, and it'll be submitted for another meeting to be reviewed and looked at.
You want to just pull the 5th, and then we can do the others?
Yeah, we want to pull the 5th.
Okay.
We want to pull the 5th.
So the 5th and the 10th, we're pulling in the 22nd and...
22nd and the 12th.
And June 12th.
I have no other comments or anything else.
Yeah, we'll do the twos. All right, any further questions on May 22nd or June 12th?
No. Motion to accept May 22nd, 2023 minutes, and June 12th, 2023.
A motion to approve the minutes of May 22nd and June 12th of this year, made by Mr. Mickelson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gracie. On the motion, any questions? Roll call vote, Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Okay, Select Board Updates. Do we have any updates? Mr. Gracie, do you have anything?
No.
All right, Mr. Tattlebaum, don't ask this. Go ahead. Mr. Tattlebaum, do you have anything before?
Can I go home now?
I've got more than enough.
Okay, wow, we'll have to mark this down.
Uncle.
Mr. Mickelson, do you...
Yeah, I have something. I got a couple of things. I got a big shout-out for the Peyton Arum Days Festival. It seems, my sister-in-law Wendy Joblin told me that it was over the top. It's bigger and better and bigger and better every year, and thank you, of course, the weather was magnificent, thank you, God, and the stars were aligned, what a wonderful, wonderful turnout. And thank you to all the residents and the non-residents that turned out and spent some money, and it was just delightful to see that. Wonderful, wonderful time for the town. And also, Dartmouth Police Relief Association, Steve Canario, they put on a deal on Saturday at the Stack House, and they had a huge turnout. I don't know if you saw that? Did you see that? Yeah? Yeah, it was terrific, very well-recepted, and they used to have it somewhere else, but it's nice to see them at Stack House. They can use the money, and it's a wonderful facility, and they have the grounds for it. So thank you to Steve and the Dartmouth Police Relief Association. Thank you, guys, for all you do, the cheaper prices for the food, because everything went to, was donated. Thank you again.
All right, I have two things, and unfortunately, they're summer-related, beach-related. Too many comments are being made on social media, and unfortunately, unfortunately, I don't like to react too much to social media comments, but unless they, you know, they, sometimes it hits a hard spot. We're getting an awful lot of complaints about seaweed at Round Hill and the lack of not being raked. Now, I understand that the park department has a job description out there, looking for somebody to come in to do the beach raking.
We hired someone today.
You hired someone today?
Right.
That's good, okay, because we tried to explain to people some of the things that we can and can't do, and one of the things that was, the beach raking was done prior many years ago, and it was stopped because the state required the park department to come up with a raking plan. And I guess the park department came up with the raking plan, but now they can't get the people. Now we've got the person. One of the things, though, is, you know, we know that the complaint came from an anonymous group. It was just a group without any names tied to the group and everything, and everybody's pointing fingers at individuals or people who live nearby and whatnot, I don't care. But the thing was, it was brought to the state's attention, the state asked the park board to do what they needed to do, the park board did what they had to do, and now this is all coming in. The other concern that I have is I'm getting complaints, I'm getting complaints, from people who visit Jones Park as to the late-night activity going on at Jones Park may not coincide with family values, for all intents and purposes, and that I'm wondering if you can talk to the chief and the shift commanders to see if the police can kind of, you know, make a pass-by and try to find our, find the upstanding citizens that don't seem to coincide with the family values that should be held at higher regards at Jones Park.
That's ongoing, Sean.
I know it's ongoing, and it has been for years. I know it's been for years, but you know something?
We've cleaned it up a few times, and then it comes back and rears its ugly head.
Right, so, and I'm just trying to put it...
No, no, I agree.
I'm just trying to put it very nicely.
I agree.
I don't want to make any accusations as to any illegalities, any wrongdoings, but, you know, if it walks like a fish, talks like a fish, well, it's certainly not a rhino. All right, anybody else have anything?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson to adjourn. Is there a second to that motion? Thank you, Mr. Gracie, I appreciate that. Roll call vote, Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Thank you for the head nod, appreciate that. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. All right, everybody, thank you very much.